Starting the tape, we've got, Adam's got the TV rolling, so we're all set there. So this is October 15, 2019, Kingston Planning Board. And we have, we have a little bit of seating change at the table. And we're also missing one of our regular members. And fortunately, our alternate, one of our alternates is here, so he will be a voting member. We'll introduce everyone right now. From my far left, Dennis Quintal is our Town Engineer. Steve Padfield is one of our alternates, but will be voting in place of Chris Bashaw, who won't be here tonight. Peter Coffin is our Vice Chair and Board Member. Lynn Merrill, Board Member. Phil Coombs is our Selectments Rep. I'm Glenn Koppelman. Ellen is also not here tonight, our Administrative Assistant and one of our alternates. So, sitting to my immediate right is our Town Planner, Glenn Greenwood. Peter Baiki, Board Member. Robin Dugay, Board Member. Okay. Well, our first public hearing is a continuance from, from last month. Greenwood Pond LLC. If you recall, this was the, the property on, on the pond that the applicant was interested in doing a, sort of a condominium arrangement with it. And the Board had a discussion with them, there were a number of issues there, and they wanted to go back to the, to their corners and think about it and come back to us tonight, so we continued it. And it appears as though they are not here.
I see no one here for them, although Ellen did speak with them.
Uh, well, we, we got somebody coming in now.
And they had asked to still talk with the Board.
And...
That's Charlie.
Is he here for?
Nope.
Nope, that's Charlie, that's just...
They had Jones and Beach.
Who was, who was Jones and Beach?
Probably not five hundred minutes ago.
Okay. Well, then, we should move on to the next one. And if they come in in the meantime, we can backfill.
Mm-hmm.
Are the folks for, uh...
One other thing. In our motions, they said that new plans and documents needed to be submitted by October 3rd.
And there were none.
And there were none.
And they have not requested a continuance from tonight.
No, they actually asked to come in tonight.
Right, they asked to come in.
They wanted to update the Board with where they had, what they had accomplished.
So, I would suggest we leave it open, and if they come in before the end of the meeting, we can, we can entertain them. Or entertain their discussion. Won't entertain, I don't think it's gonna be entertaining for them.
Always hopeful.
What are you saying?
And I, are any of the folks in the audience here, oh, Ellie, you're here for that one. Is anyone else here for this first hearing? No. You're welcome to hang out for a while, see if they show. My guess is if they're gonna show up, they'll, they'll, they'll be here fairly soon.
Yeah, I can't really tell everything well, it's not like they're gonna be here.
Right, right, and they know they're first on the agenda, so... Okay. Charlie, are you here for the Tricia Tid applicant?
I guess I'm right on time then.
So you're, apparently you are right on time.
Well, that's good.
Uh, if you, I, I think if you, if you put it over there, Adam can, Adam can capture it on TV.
Sure. Would you like me to stand here as well, or?
Well, if you're gonna be talking, if you're gonna be talking to that map...
Okay.
Uh, you're gonna need to be talking using that mic that's there. And while you're settling in, I will read the public notice for this.
Uh, quick question, do you need plans?
Yeah.
Oh, alright. There, there are, there are some here.
Okay. I have eleven seventeen to that, if convenient.
Okay.
Pass those out.
And if, if the Board Members can just hang on to those other plans for now, just in case Greenwood Pond comes in.
Do you want to share with Dennis?
You guys have enough there? You've got one there? Phil?
Okay, we're good.
We're good.
There you go. Yeah.
Okay, so the, the, the public notice for this application reads, well, first of all, it's, the applicant is Tricia Tid. The property is 23 and 21 Mill Road and back parcel off Mill Road. Tax maps R-11-13, R-11-19, and R-12-14A. It says that the applicant is proposing to consolidate three parcels into one 18.99 acre lot, and then subdivide into four residential building lots with a minimum of three acres per lot. One of the existing residential homes will be raised. All lots will be served by their own individual septic systems, wells, and driveways. So plans have been passed out. We do have, we do have some department comment sheets, which I, which I'll get to at the appropriate time. We also have comments from Town Planner and Town Engineer. But we, we normally start off with a presentation by the applicant or the applicant's representative, which in this case, Mr. Zilch, I presume?
Good evening, Glenn.
Now, you're gonna need to be close to that.
I will, okay.
Well, needs to be, needs to be close. Otherwise, we won't hear you, and the folks out on TV land won't be able to hear you.
Great.
Go.
For the record, Charlie Zilch from SCC and Associates.
Is that on? Uh, you're on behalf of the owner.
Is, is it on, Charlie?
It is on.
Okay.
It says it's on.
They're on, yeah?
Test one, test two.
It's not working. Alright, well, just speak loudly and clearly.
I'll just jump over there if you'd like. Alright.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll just speak loudly then.
Okay.
There you go. Now it sounds like it just came on. Did it?
Yeah.
Okay. Does this work?
Yes, yes.
Alright, we're off and running then.
I think Adam did some magic with the, uh...
He must have.
With the adjustments.
Little bit of mixing back there in the soundboard. Alright, so again, Charlie Zilch from SCC and Associates, here on behalf of the owner and the applicant, Tricia Tid, for consolidation and subdivision plan application. Probably best off if you look at Sheets Two and Three. I'll kind of walk you through the existing conditions. So basically, the proposal involves three of Tricia's abutting properties located on the east side of Mill Road. They're identified as tax map R-11, 18, and 19, and R-12, 14A, street address of 21 and 23 Mill Road. The southeastally most lot, Lot Number 19, everybody see where that is?
Yeah. Actually, I'll go back to this one. This one's the right type of... See, he's got the... This one here.
You have a question?
Okay, do you want to?
This is on Sheet Three.
Thank you.
So the southeastally most lot of the property, Lot 19, this lot here contains 3.72 acres, and it has 336 feet of frontage on Mill Road. And currently, the lot supports two single-family dwellings on the one lot, served by their own onsite septic system and well. The next lot, or the northerly lot along Mill Road, the abutting lot, Lot 18, that currently contains 7.62 acres, and has 683 feet of frontage on Mill Road. And that lot happens to be Tricia's home lot. That supports one single-family dwelling, again, with its own onsite septic system and well. And then the third lot involved with this consolidation subdivision is a backland parcel behind Lot...
Yeah, it faces, probably around Lot 18.
And that one is Lot 14A. That's 7.65 acres, and the lot is completely undeveloped. So there's basically three parcels involved here. So all the properties contain together 18.99 acres with a combined total frontage of a little over a thousand feet of frontage on Mill Road. All the lots are within the rural residential zone, as well as within the Aqua Fair Protection District. And Tricia Tid just made it into the room, the owner and applicant. Hi, Trish.
Hi.
So, while you're still on that sheet, there are some wetlands present on the property, as identified by our Wetland Scientist, Timmy Forda. They're delineated as shown on the plans, you can see the limits of that. They're basically on Lot 18 and the backland 14A, and it's comprised of a mix of poorly and very poorly drained soils, one big wetland complex in that one particular area. The rest of the lot is all high and dry. The property's not located in Shoreline Protection, nor is it located within a flood hazard zone. So I think now, if you want to just turn your attention to Sheet Four. So basically, the proposal is, as I said, is to consolidate the lot into one property, and then re-subdivide it into four street furnished lots, all intended to support residential house lots. So again, starting with the southerly lot, I'll just kind of run through the, the four proposed lots here. Proposed Lot A, that'll be a three-acre building lot, contain 200 feet of frontage. The second lot end, Lot B, again, a three-acre lot with 200 feet of frontage, and that one will support one of the two buildings that were formerly on Lot 19. They're gonna raise the other buildings, so it'll retain just one of the buildings there. And then Lot C, where Trish resides now, that'll be reconfigured to a 9.59 acre lot with 200 feet of frontage. And again, the house will remain there with the onsite septic system and well. And then the last lot, the fourth lot, Lot D, that'll be 3.39 acres, and that'll have 419 feet of frontage, or the remaining frontage on Mill Road. And that is, again, an additional building lot. So if you go to Sheet Six... You can see that all the proposed lots will be served by their own onsite septic systems and wells that meet all the zoning and siding requirements. We dug test bits, a couple of test bits on each lot, witnessed by Mike Cuomo, so we have a 4,000 square foot receiving area on every lot, regardless of whether or not there's a house there. So we proved that each lot meets all the siding requirements. The, all the lots will have their access from their own driveway, whether we construct it on Lot A and D, or slightly reconfigured to a single driveway for the middle lots B and C. So there are, there is a loop driveway there, we'll eliminate half of that driveway, that'll support Lot C, and kind of same situation on Lot B as well. So it'll be one access for each one of the house lots. That's really primarily it, there's only one state approval required here, and that's state subdivision approval. We submitted that, and that's been granted. And that state subdivision approval is for any of the lots that's under three eight, uh, under five acres, rather. So that would be for A, B, and D.
Just a, a quick question?
Sure.
While we're still on Sheet Six...
Yep.
The newly configured, remaining, the, the current residential lot for the applicant, by putting the lot line there, it looks as though the driveway is now not 20 feet off the lot line? Is that correct?
You're talking about Lot B, or Lot C?
Yes.
There is an existing gravel driveway, that's not the primary driveway access, that's just, basically, they just use that for in and out of the back of the house. The driveway is over on the right-hand side?
Oh, to where it says proposed paved parking area?
Yep.
Okay.
So basically, what they'll do is they'll eliminate the other half of the driveway that would have looped out onto, now, the whole Lot B, that would have gone, and then they'll just create additional parking area for themselves in front of the house.
Okay.
So just a minor adjustment to make that work. Yep. As far as I know, there's no variances required. The only waivers that we submitted were to review engineer account, I guess you guys looked for a little bit more on that, so that was denied, and then we skipped a preliminary review. So I didn't submit any of the waivers with this application.
Charlie, which sheet shows the monumentation for the final configuration?
That'll be on Sheet Four.
So it's showing bounds at the corners, and then iron pins in any segment that's or lot lines over 200 feet.
So you've got one iron pin at a corner, but that looks as though it's an existing...
That's an existing, correct. There's an iron pipe there.
So any new corners would be the required...
Yes.
...stoner concrete?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, uh, let's, let's go through comments from our professional staff. Dennis, would you like to go first?
Sure.
And there's, uh, um, there's a memo at your place from Dennis on this one?
Do I have a copy of that?
If, if you don't, we get you one. Actually, there's a, there's a full set where Chris would be.
Do you have an extra one? Great, thank you. All set?
Yep.
Okay, um, I just have a few comments, I think the plans are pretty, pretty complete, so some minor comments. So number one is the mailbox turnout may require a group location, because we typically show where the driveway is, a paved area for the, where the mailbox is supposed to go, according to a standard driveway requirement. So, uh, that should be shown individually, or the Postal Service might require a group mailbox for a subdivision like this. So you should check with the local postal, Postal Service for that. Article 901, 1C-3, the existing gravel driveway on C is closer than 20 feet, which you just mentioned, Glenn, so if that probably easy, it's easy to probably just move that a little, to make sure it meets that requirement. Number three, 905, 7C, um, the 20-foot easement along the highway must state that it's for maintenance, drainage, and future road improvements dedicated to the town of Kingston. I believe that's what it is, says in the regulations, and should show that on the plan. Number four is define by bearing a distance the easement located on B for the septic system, so people will know exactly where that bearing and distance is, and maybe put some pins on the corners also to know, clarify where that easement is. Number five, stormwater roof runoff is proposed to recharge the groundwater by use of drip line, drip line trenches and drywells. It's standard practice to sheet roof runoff away from the edge of full solar walls. I would recommend that it, it clearly be noted that the proposed drainage be directed away from the foundations with, with the houses that have full sures. These features should be installed and inspected prior to occupancy of the dwellings. Number six, prior to signing the MYLR, the approved tax map and lot numbers shall be shown, and the state subdivision approval number should be noted on Sheet One. And those are the comments that I got, and so they were minor in nature, so other than that, I think the plans are pretty complete.
Okay. Speaking of completeness, that is something that the Board is gonna need to decide and act on at the appropriate time, but are you thinking about that? Glenn?
I indicate that my first note is that the applicant has requested a waiver of the mandatory preliminary review. The Board discussed that when they talked about putting the Board, putting the plan on the agenda. I can't remember if we actually formally voted for it, since it wasn't before us formally. So I think it would be good for the Board to actually make a formal notice, I mean, a formal motion now to accept that waiver request, because he does have it on his plan set as a requested waiver that he should be able to put a date to. So that's something you should probably do this evening. The proposal requires NHDES subdivision approval, because the proposed lots are smaller than five acres in size. There are extensive wetlands on the site, and Proposed Lot D shows calculations for contiguous upland area of exactly 60,000 square feet. This calculation relies upon placement of the wetland delineation, because this is the very edge of a zoning compliant lot size, some method of verification seems appropriate, perhaps confirmation of the wetland line by the town's consulting soil scientist, so that we're all in agreement that 60,000 square feet of upland is available on the site, because if it's 59, 999, we're really not complying with zoning. So it just, we're right on that edge with that, with that, that lot creation. The driveway proposed on Lot D seems to need to pass over a portion of the 4K area for the proposed septic system. This should not be the case. Can the driveway be shifted 15 feet west to clear this conflict? I know that that is the lot that the town road agent has asked for site distance, and so I'm not sure if that's what's limiting this and putting it so close to that, but we really shouldn't have that driveway running over the 4K area. I just suggest that because of the building setback, being a bit constrained on Lot D, that the home location be shown, or a proposed home location. It's not actually something we ask in our regulations, so it would be something that the, the applicant would be doing to ease my mind. I am concerned by the delineated temporary easement for the septic system for Lot C. A new system is only proposed if the existing one fails. It seems that that could be years from now, and calling that easement a temporary easement seems disingenuous. Dennis has asked that the meats and bounds be created. I, I guess, I'm just, I'd just as, I'd be happier to see it noted as a proposed easement, because calling it temporary when it really might not be temporary in, in nature is confusing to me. I might just, might just be of small mind. The imperv, the impervious surface, both existing and proposed, needs to be indicated on the plan. The plan shows buildings on abutting parcels to a distance of 100 feet as required. Septic systems are also supposed to be depicted to 200 feet, but it's, it's difficult to know where those septic systems are, actually. But I just, I'm just saying that because the regulations require it. Note 15 states that the proposed new lot is subject to impact fees. I feel that in this instance, there are actually two new lots in the subdivision, even though there were, we started with three lots, one was completely landlocked and had no development potential, so an impact fee would have never been assessed on it. But it's being reconfigured totally, and, and becoming a new lot, which, from my perspective, should receive an impact fee assessment. So I think that that lot needs to be changed to reflect that, that note, I'm sorry, needs to be changed to reflect that. And my last note is, does the Board want to take a site walk for this proposal?
Charlie, did you get a copy of Glenn's comments?
Yeah, I was just reading through with him.
Okay.
As well. Yep. Thank you.
While, while we're on comments, let, let me just review the two Department head comments that we received. The Health Officer indicates that there are no septic designs. That's all, that's all the comment sheet says. And the Fire Department has no comments. Alright, before we, before we get into discussion, would, would the Board be interested in, well, let's see, should we, well, since the preliminary review is supposed to happen before the final plans, I mean, normally, we wouldn't do waivers until we've accepted jurisdiction, but since that one would normally happen prior to, maybe we should do that first.
I think it would just be cleaner to get it out of the way and provide Charlie with a date that he can put on his note, on that first page.
Make a motion to waive the mandatory preliminary review.
Motion by Lynn, second by Peter Coffin. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so that carries unanimously. Would you care to take up the issue of jurisdiction at this point? Before we get much deeper into the discussion?
Um, the, with the exception of the 60,000 square foot confirmation... If it is zoning issue, if they didn't have that 60,000, they're going to be able to show 60,000 one way or another. So I, I don't think that it's an issue of eliminating a lot in order for this subdivision to be viable. And most of my other comments are fairly, you know, sort of administrative and not unwieldy.
And Dennis's were fairly limited as well.
I'll look if we accept jurisdiction on these plans dated August 26, 2019, for lots, pardon, 11-18, 11-19, and 12-14A.
Second.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Lynn, to invoke jurisdiction on this plan, meaning that it's complete enough for us to continue working on it and taking any further action that we would need to. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so that's unanimous as well?
I do have a question that Glenn brought up about the impact fees. I agree that you're creating another frontage field, add two lots with frontage on a road, which would be buildable lots, and now you have four. Uh, the question is, who's the arbiter of that? It would, should be asked for an opinion from Sumner, or, or do we just...
You can.
Or we just, or do we just state that there are two new buildable lots?
Who, who determines whether or not a lot is, has an impact fee? Is that our jurisdiction, or is it someone else's jurisdiction?
Um, the only, from the perspective of a landowner, if a lot existed before the impact fee ordinance took place, then it shouldn't be assessed an impact fee. But in this case, the lot that existed before the impact fee ordinance took place is not the, the lot that's getting accepted by this subdivision.
Right.
So although there was, there did used to be a lot that existed there, it was a back lot with no development potential.
In theory, since they're taking two actions here, they're combining the three lots into one, and then they're taking the one lot and subdividing it into four, there are, technically, there are four new lots, because you've taken...
Except two of them already have...
Well, actually, with three new lots, because, because once you combine the three lots into one, you have one building lot, and, and you said two have homes on them, so yeah, I would, I would waive those.
Could I muddy it a little bit more, too? There's the potential, if we didn't do this consolidation and a subdivision, that these two lots could have shared a lot line adjustment that would have given the backland frontage in a buildable area. So just with a simple lot line adjustment, you could have created the, the frontage in the buildable area for that back lot, and you'd still start with two lots and wind up with two lots. Just food for thought.
Not, however, the proposal.
Yeah. Right.
I mean, I would think that they have four lots, two, two of which are new, but again, my question would be who has jurisdiction to determine whether or not they, whether or not impact fees are determined? Is that something the Selectmen do? Is that something the Planning Board does?
I would assume it's the Selectmen and assessors.
I would assume it's the Selectmen.
Well, the assessment happens at the building permit phase, but generally, we're responsible for making sure that the applicant understands the responsibility for an impact fee.
I was under the impression, I was under the impression that, correct me if I'm wrong, because this is important to me, that an impact fee was assessed when that, when a building was built. Whether it was a lot or not.
No, no, there's a...
So if there was a lot there forever, and somebody was to build a building on it, there's no automatic impact fee?
Correct.
Very interesting. Very interesting. Thank you.
Because, yeah, we, we talked about that offline, but yes.
Okay. So, so our discussion here is really just informative for the applicant. The actual mechanics of it would happen once the lots are created and once building permits are then applied for. Okay. All right, discussion around from board members at this point before I open it up for public comment.
Just looking at Glenn's comments, I don't think we need to deal with the site walk issue today unless you, or maybe at the end.
You do or you don't?
I, I don't, I don't think we necessarily need to at this point.
It's pretty straightforward.
It is.
The subdivision itself.
And I don't, I don't think you were necessarily recommending it, but you were.
I generally like to bring that up.
Just, just so that it gets discussed.
It's something that the, the board has the right to do and I like to remind them of that.
Because you've, nothing better to do with your Saturdays?
Nothing I'd rather do on a Saturday or Sunday morning.
Okay, well, the board can be thinking about that. All right, I'm gonna, I'm going to go to the public at this point. If there's anyone in the audience, either in a butter or an interested party, who has a comment or a question on this application, you're welcome to be recognized and then to come up to the, to the table by the mic there. Okay. It's quiet. It's crickets. All right, there being no public comment, we will close the public comment at this point. Oh, and I just wanted to mention for the, because our recording secretary is going to be doing this from, from video and from the audio recording, we normally state when we start and end the hearings, and this one started at six fifty-five roughly, I think. Was it six fifty? Six fifty? Okay. Okay, so, back to the board. We do have, we do have a number of, a number of comments from, I mean, they, you know, not as, not as many comments as in some other, some other plans that we've seen, but, but we do have some here.
If I may, I just want to speak to Glenn's comment about the sixty thousand square feet contiguous. Obviously, it's by design. Tim Ford, as I said, flagged the limits, delineated the wetland out here. It's a, a pretty solid line. It's at the base of the hill. So there's, I really don't feel that there's any chance for anybody to come out there and have a, a difference of opinion as far as where that line is. Like I said, it's right at the base of the hill and it, it pancakes right there. So the line is, is really easily discernible even to the layman. And so when I did the lot calculation, I started over on the far right side to make sure we had three hundred, I'm sorry, two hundred feet of frontage and three acres. Then I came over to the left side with the lot that we're talking about, and I wanted to make sure that had just enough area to support the lot with the proper amount of frontage because really I didn't want to squeeze or create any issues with the two inner lots where the existing homes are. Tried to leave that as much space as possible. So I could have made it sixty-one thousand or something like that, but I sat down, I kind of scaled out where a house could go, how the septic would lay out on that lot, where the driveway would come in, and it seems to fit reasonably well with some flexibility. There's enough of a building envelope, so I didn't really feel a need to have to expand on that. But, you know, hopefully the board's comfortable with that. I could always provide a sketch showing you what my thoughts were as far as the layout, and I think you'd probably be pretty comfortable with it. Just a thought.
Charlie, is there any chance that that line was actually laid out when Mike Formo was out there doing the test pits?
What's that?
Is there any chance that the wetland line, the wetland flagging was out there when Mike Formo was out there?
Yes, oh absolutely, yep. No, we put together a concept after we had the existing conditions done, and everything was freshly flagged and laid out at that time. And Mike, like I said, we did a couple of test pits on every lot, just so we had, again, some flexibility in design rather than just one test per lot, per, per lot.
Dennis?
Just to let you know, I, I just sketched out where a house, a twenty-eight by thirty-six house with a twenty-four by twenty-eight garage could go on that lot, coming in with a driveway and a turnaround, and a septic tank and a leach field would go in the corner of where the four K area is. And it's plenty of room for a house, septic and driveway, and, and it's still, the building setback is seventy-five feet from the wetlands, so between there and the house, you're close to a hundred feet, so there's lots, there's plenty of room for building a house there. I'm pretty familiar with this area. It's fairly flat, a lot of sand, so it's good soils for the whole area, so I don't think there's too much of a problem with building on that line.
Okay. And did, you determine if there's anything, any changes due to the aquifer protection zone or wetlands protection, shore land? Okay, so none of those apply?
Shore land doesn't apply here.
Right. So that's just wetland, not a pond? There's a pond back there somewhere farther to the east, I think.
We will have to have an additional two feet of separation from bed bottom to seasonal high water table in this zone, though. So the, the leach fields will be built up a little bit more than, that's part of the, one of the requirements, yep.
Was that information for the, the new flood, flood zone maps that you got from the federal government?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, and we noted on the cover sheet the, the source of the, the maps.
Okay.
All right, well, I mean, there are a number of punch list things here that if you, if you combine Dennis's comments with Glenn's, even though they might not be, you know, huge items, they, it does create a, a bit of a punch list, and so I think the question that the board has to answer for itself before it takes action is whether or not those are easily, fit into a conditional approval, or if you'd rather see these changes before, before taking final action.
I think that the notes are fairly easy to consider and to make the notations on the plans, so I would think that I would be happy to approve something with the conditions for those notations.
Okay. We, we'd need to be enumerating them however, as, as part of the motion.
Okay. I make a motion. Do we accept the plan?
To approve, we've already, you've accepted it for jurisdiction.
Okay. Do I make a motion that we approve the plan for the subdivision?
Conditionally.
Conditionally approve the plan for the subdivision of tax map lots R-11, lots eighteen, nineteen, and fourteen A with the following conditions. That the mailboxes be delineated per the approval of the local postal service. That the twenty-foot easement along the highway must state that it's for maintenance drainage and future roadway improvements dedicated to the town of Kingston. That the stormwater roof runoff is proposed to recharge the groundwater by use of drip line trenches and dry wells. It is, that prior to signing the MYLAR, the approved tax map lot numbers are shown and indicated. Oh, yeah, because that was also on Glenn's. That the, we define the bearing and distance for the easement location on lot B.
Before you, be.
Septic easement.
Are you still on number five or have you gone to Glenn's?
I've gone.
We backed up to four.
We backed up to four.
Backed to four, okay.
I did one, three, four, five, and six.
Okay, all right. And before you, and before you think about seven, do we have subdivision approval yet?
Yes, we do.
We do, okay.
That the impervious surface for the existing and proposed needs be indicated on the plan. And that the proposed two new lots be subject to impact fees noted on the plan.
Could you just repeat for me which ones of Glenn's you?
Of Glenn's?
Yes.
Did the impervious?
For Glenn's, I did the impervious.
And the note about impact fees.
That the impervious surface be, that the new lot is subject to impact fees. Because his number six was part of Dennis's number four.
Right.
And Dennis felt comfortable with number five.
Yep.
And also with number three. That's where I was.
Okay. All right, so that is a motion with those conditions attached to it.
Did you include the, the driveway not passing over the impervious?
No, because they determined that the driveway was at a different place.
Oh, they, they, no, that one, that wasn't the one. This is, this one he was concerned that was going over there. Lot D driveway was shown that's going over there. I think as long as they can locate the driveway to not.
Bend in like that?
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. I think that, redraw that.
So we'll just add that?
Yeah. No driveways covering impervious areas.
So you're adding that condition?
That the existing driveway on lot C.
Not existing. Oh, yeah, no, that's, we're talking about the proposed driveway on lot D not, not cover the four K area.
Oh, there we go. Okay, I'm sorry. That the proposed driveway on lot D not pass over the four K area for the septic system.
All right. So that's a motion. Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Motion is made by Lynn and Peter Bakie made the second. Further discussion? Glenn, any final comments?
No. And for the purposes of determining, you'll know the, the references in there for Ellen to do the minutes from, I guess. Did, were we using Glenn's comments and?
Yeah.
Right, using Glenn's comment sheet.
So that when it comes, when the plans come back in for final approval, you guys can?
Yeah, we've got Glenn's number four, six, seven, and nine.
Trying to make it as clear as possible that they, as long as they know what they're looking at.
And it's Glenn's comment sheet from October fifteen and Dennis's from the same date, October fifteen.
And the conditional approval was for ninety days, right?
Yes.
The, the call.
All right, further discussion from the board? Dennis, did you have anything further?
No.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. All right, carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you very, very much. I do have one question though, just for clarification.
No, 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 no questions.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I really, I won't screw this up, I promise. Just about the impervious area, you're looking for a calculation. I can only give you a plus or minus for proposed.
Yes, that's, that's fine.
That's fine, that's all you're looking for?
That's fine.
Driveway, house, approximation? Okay, great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Charlie. Okay. If you could, if folks could pass the plan sets back, we'll put them back in the folder.
Seven thirty.
And we conclude, thank you, we concluded this hearing at seven thirty.
Those are eleven by seventeens.
Oh.
She's not really going to want those in her file.
Oh, well.
These, I mean.
Oh, okay.
They're just going to take up room.
Seven thirty-two.
We, we ended it, we called it seven thirty?
Right.
And we're starting this one at seven thirty-two, and I think that the folks over to this side are for the Fauzone project. Is, is the, I know that Mr. Fauzone sent a note saying that he would be a little bit late tonight, but that presumably someone else would be presenting in his place? And that would be, okay, excellent. So while you're setting up.
We have plans, sir.
Well, we probably do. Yes. So this, this application is for Joseph Fauzone. The property is located at fifty-three Marshall Road, tax map R forty-one lot seven. The applicant is proposing a thirteen lot, open space residential, single-family subdivision is what it says. And as I, as I mentioned, Mr. Fauzone did, did send an email today indicating that he would probably be a little late at another meeting before this one. So if you could introduce yourself, sir, and tell us what's, what's happening.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Scott Coltham, Beals Associates in Stratum. We are the project engineers for this. Yes, that statement is correct. Joseph actually had another planning board hearing and was hoping to piggyback. I think with the first item being a, a no-show this evening, things got a little speedy and so he may still come in at some point, but we will, we will continue. So to update the board, we're here for a full subdivision application for an open space subdivision of thirteen lots.
If you could hang, hang on just a second while we flip the tape.
So again, we're here this evening for a full application of a proposed open space subdivision of thirteen lots. To refresh the board, we were here in July of this year for a design review hearing to review the same. At that point, we reviewed a conventional subdivision, which was based on thirteen lots and is the plan in front of you here. This is derived of Connector Road from the main road out front of Marshall Road and connects to Brookhaven Road. This was conventional with septic and well in normal sized lots. Now this lot, this lotting plan is a requirement of the planning board to determine lot density for an open space subdivision. So the secondary plan we reviewed at that time, which is the basis of the project, is an open space subdivision. The open space subdivision has thirteen lots in a U-shaped road, uh, contains a large portion of open space in the rear. Uh, as you can see, there is the Little River here toward the back end. Um, adequate open space, smaller lots, designed in an open space subdivision. So, uh, timing-wise on the project, we have created and designed the full road design, drainage design, and submitted that to the board. In addition, there has been a hydro geo study submitted to the board. We had submitted those materials and had been review comments received, uh, actually this afternoon, so hot off the press. So we do have those review comments, I am not prepared to respond to that, only having a couple hours to, uh, to review them. Our main goal this evening is to ask the board to accept the application as long as they find it complete. Um, we have a couple comments we'd like to review with the board, uh, after that? And then basically request a continuance for us to go back and do our homework and come with a refreshed, uh, design. Is there any more details you would like, or?
Glenn, Glenn has unfortunately stepped away from, from the table, but perhaps Dennis, if you'd like to-
Sure.
-go over your comments, uh, for the board.
I did, yeah, definitely.
Okay, so, I'll just quickly go through my comments. The title sheet should say the proposed subdivision, not site plan. Uh, number two, required permit should include, uh, the EPA NPDES, a natural, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. Uh, number three, a conventional subdivision, uh, yield plan has been provided. The proposed road begins at the end of Brookhaven Road, an existing dead-end road, and passes over an easement through land owned by Peter Broderick. In review of his deed, it states that the easement to cross his property is reserved to BAE Homes, Inc., or their assigns. My question is if BAE Homes is not, uh, does not exist today, who has the rights to this easement? Is this easement still valid for anyone to use for crossing this private property? I assume the developer needs to provide that they have the right to do this, otherwise there would not be a valid yield plan and the project could not go forward as presented. So number four, zoning two oh four two C one. Setbacks require no structures or parking areas within two hundred feet of Marshall Road? And that all natural features shall be left undisturbed except for the proposed roadway. This plan is proposing to construct, uh, stormwater sediment and infiltration basins within the setback area, which will disturb the existing natural features. Clearly, natural features, uh, natural screening is, uh, intended to be preserved in these setback areas and stormwater features should not be there. Number five, on sheet five, the location of the stormwater control device, devices should be clearly shown. Basin number two is located not only within the setback, but also, uh, the well, the, within, uh, within the well protective zone for lot seven dash one. These devices are intended to capture pollutants from surface runoff. It's not prudent to design pollution retention devices within a well-protective zone. Uh, six, sheet si- six, correct the spelling of buildable. Number seven, uh, nine oh five nine C, the four thousand square foot area of wastewater systems must be a hundred feet from wetlands. I find that portions of those shown on lot seven one and seven three are within a hundred feet of the poorly drained pipe-stone soil. Number eight, the open space calculations show upland area provided, uh, provide how, how much of this is contiguous? Cause I think in the regulations it says that, I think forty percent has to be contiguous. So if they could just add that, uh, calculation on there. The plan must show location for grading, for the community mailbox turnout. Number ten, sheet eleven, at least one soil test pit must be, uh, conducted in the basin areas and witnessed by the town agent. The test pits are done away from the basins and information provided indicates that the infiltration elevation, uh, bottom of the stone is less than one foot required above seasonal high water table. Eleven, show the location of the culvert head walls. Number twelve, basin cross-sections do not show the sediment portion. Number thirteen, basin plan view should be to scale and indicate square foot area, area of the base and the distance to the 4K area on seven dash, lot seven dash one. Number fourteen, the calculations show that peak elevation of a fifty-year storm in basin two is close to the top of the berm elevation. A minimum of at least six inches of freeboard is required. Number fifteen, DES stormwater manual, uh, detail shows the limit of the hundred-year storm event. Please provide calculations, results for the hundred-year storm event to show that the peak elevation will, uh, what the elevation will be during the storm event. Number sixteen, it appears that overflow from basin number one on, flows onto lot seven dash twelve, uh, on, on seven dash twelve, discharges onto seven dash thirteen. Please provide a detail as to where this discharge water will flow and the required, and required associated easements on, onto that lot. Number seventeen, sheet thirteen, the dimensions for the riprap at the culvert outlet must be clearly shown in the plan view on sheet five. Uh, number eighteen, construction sequence, note twelve on sheet five states a pre-construction meeting is required. It should be noted at the beginning of the construction sequence, so as not to be overlooked. Number nineteen, a, I recommend that a note be added that before construction of the roadway, the detention basins and swales be completely constructed and seeded first. Stormwater control devices must be installed to prevent runoff from entering the basins and swales until they are completely stabilized. Number twenty, article nine oh five fourteen C three, all plans must be at the same scale. Sheet two of three is one inches eighty, I recommend that sheet five of thirteen also be at one inch, one inch equals eighty in order to better read the details on that sheet. Number twenty-one, article nine oh five fourteen C nine, note, note stating that the plan will comply with the Kingston Fire Protection Regulations. By fourteen C thirty-one, the plan must show butters, buildings, wastewater facilities, uh, driveways, and wells within a hundred feet of the parcel. Number twenty-three, nine oh five fourteen C thirty-five, uh, lot numbers must be provided by the board of selectmen. And same article D four, sheet ten, the culvert at station thirteen plus twenty-eight must be a minimum diameter of eighteen inches, not fifteen. It also must have minimum of two feet of cover. Nine oh five fourteen D seven, provide an acceptable street name. Number twenty-six, nine oh five fourteen G, a performance bond must be provided. Nine oh seven three, the applicant shall submit a detailed worksheet with estimated cost for road construction. A town standard spreadsheet can be provided. Twenty-seven, nine oh five fourteen I, sheet two of three must comply with required monuments. All four corners and angle points of each lot must be monit- monumented with, uh, concrete or granite. Rebar is shown on all rear corners. Twenty-eight, the soil report, in describing the Deerfield Soil Series, this report states that no seasonal high water table was found between fifteen and forty inches of the soil surface. However, the test pit's results provided show at least twenty-eight of the test pits with seasonal water table less than forty inches. All of the proposed buildings will be in the area mapped as Deerfield Soil. Under the drainage analysis, number twenty-nine, uh, the design method objective states that all land disturbed during construction will be permanently stabilized within sixty days of groundbreaking. I'll be looking forward to the pre-construction meeting to find out from the site contract how they will be able to, uh, meet this requirement. That'd be quite a challenge. Number thirty, page two of the analysis says that, uh, treatment is received by deep sump catch basins, bio-retention ponds, and stone infiltration trenches. It also refers to sheet, uh, C, um, C sheets and E sheets. Am I missing some information that was not provided? Cause I don't, don't find that. Number thirty-one, the conclusion states that the alteration terrain, uh, permit is not required. However, there will be more than a hundred thousand square feet of site disturbance and an AOT permit will be required. Number thirty-two, the infiltration rate used for calculations for the infiltration basin is a KSAT value which was obtained from the SSS and NE publication, public five chart for Deerfield Sea Horizon. According to the test pit results in that area, it appears that the bottom of the basins will be in the B horizon to be required, distance above seasonal water table. I believe this would mean that the value of three instead of ten must be used unless some other method of determine the KSAT value was used. Number thirty-three, the seasonal water table recorded on the infiltration practice, uh, criteria sheet for, um, these, the, uh, the four bays are elevation one thirty-three and one twenty-seven respectively. But test pits in the area show the water table three to four feet above those elevations. See my comment, number seven. Accurate input values must be provided to properly design these stormwater devices. Number thirty-four, the watershed plan, W two, does not show where node three B R is located. Number thirty-five, under the stormwater management and operation and maintenance plan, nine oh eight sixteen six, this document must be recorded in the registry after final approval by the planning board. Number thirty-six, the document talks about condominium conversion and states that an annual report shall be submitted to the town of Somersworth, DPW. This document should be for the project in the town of Kingston, not a copy of one from Somersworth. Site hydrology report, number thirty-seven. The report comments that nitrate-reduced septic systems be designed for lots eight through eleven in order to meet the required nitrate concentration down gradients in the brook below. Uh, the required ten milligrams per liter. A note should be added to the plan stating that this, uh, stating this requirement, perhaps the planning board would want these designs completed before final approval of, of the subdivision. And that completes my review and I guess that's enough for now.
Well, that's, that's a lot of stuff, Dennis.
Sorry. Not my fault.
No, it's not your fault. That's your job. Okay.
Before you go-
Thank you, Dennis.
Glenn, can you define what KSAT means? I, I wasn't familiar with that.
Uh, it's, 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 uh, it's an infiltration, um, the ability of the soil to in- infiltrate groundwater. And I'm not sure I can define it much more than that.
Right, yeah, okay. But that's what it is, it's an infiltration.
But it, it is a requirement for doing, uh, the analysis for the percolation rate. And that's why they're using a value of ten, which means the water goes down very quickly. Uh, and absorbs the water that quickly. But if you use a value of three, it would mean you need to have a bigger area-
Okay.
-to accept that, accept that water.
That was my next question.
It makes a difference on the sizing of the stormwater detention area.
Thanks, Dennis. Would you like to do yours?
Sure.
Okay.
Mine will take less time.
Really?
Yeah.
It's also a pretty decent list, though.
So first, the proposed protection district then requires a hydrogeologic study, which has been prepared. In this instance, it's been prepared by Dan Atreslo, who usually acts as the town's hydrogeologist. Um, I posed the question of, of whether the board will be sending this report out for a third-party review? And my advice is that we should send it out for a third-party review. I don't think that we've ever had a hydrogeologic study submitted to us that we didn't have reviewed by someone. Um, and there's just a, a little bit of a wrinkle here with who prepared this one. The plan includes a boundary line adjustment, um, between the property and the abutting parcel. This wasn't noticed for a subdivision and a boundary line adjustment. The application materials that Ellen used for the public notice only indicated that this was an innovative zoning subdivision. There was no, uh, discussion in the application materials for, uh, boundary line adjustment with the, uh, butters, the escavars. The plan shows it, I'm sure that they're reflecting it properly, it seems to me that it's all been engineered. But we can't approve a boundary line adjustment that hasn't been noticed, so in the intervening time, we're gonna have to send out notices to, to all the butters so that that boundary line adjustment can take place. Um, lots for the proposal, when they come into us for subdivision, are supposed to be referenced by letters, not numbers, so that should be changed. Um, the conventional plan shows, um, that's shown on page six of thirteen indicates a connection to the end of Brookhaven Road that connects to Marshall Road. The proposal shows lots sized appropriately for the aquifer zone and all meeting the standard of greater than sixty thousand square feet of buildable area, which isn't necessarily contiguous upland. But I think that's what they're, they're positing. Except for lot thirteen, which doesn't give us any information about buildable area, so that information should be provided. The applicant has provided information from GOV Environmental Surfaces, which is attached to this memo that details that the only land impacted by the town's shoreline protection district is the portion of property along the Little River to the east of conventional lots seven and eight. The applicant contends that the stream that bisects lots four, five, and nine on the conventional plan does not meet the can, the definition of a protected stream in our town ordinance. And the way I read the ordinance, I, I agree with them. The plan needs to detail any septic systems located within one hundred feet of the property boundaries. If no systems exist, a note that indicates this needs to be placed on the plan. The well easements on several lots-
Succeed the non-buildable areas on the abutting parcels. Um, and the-
Point I'm getting at here is well radiuses can go over property lines if they only go over, um, to the extent that they fall in the setback area of the abutting parcel where the abutter couldn't do any building anyway. But there are a few instances where they go beyond- And actually be located in land that the property owner would have the right to, to put something on. And these well easements might actually prohibit that. So that needs to be addressed in some way. Uh, in addition, several- ...of land, it seems appropriate, um, maybe some statement should be in the documents that are prepared for the easement of that open space, that these exist and, um, are approved. Um, plan notes, um, specifically note ten on sheet five of thirteen indicate that the open space for this development will be owned by homeowners association. The legal instruments guiding this ownership will need to be provided to the town for review by council. Um, does the planning board want to take a walk of, a sidewalk of this property? The road is intended, I believe, to be a, a public right-of-way, I'd just like to make sure that that's clear. The plans do not show the driveways for each unit. This needs to be displayed and how will driveways not negatively affect the septic reserve areas for several of the lots, specifically, um, seven dash four, seven dash six, seven dash seven, seven dash eight, and seven dash ten? It appears the driveways would have to go right through those 4K areas. The existing and proposed impervious areas must be calculated for the site. And I ask, is there an entry treatment, um, a, a development sign and landscaping or anything proposed for the development? Locations and details of such a feature must be included in the plan set. Those are my comments.
Okay. And you have a copy of both Dennis's and Glenn's comments?
I do, thank you.
You probably only got them tonight, but you do have them?
Yes, I received them. Um, just a hot- Public hearing. Four, in his review commentary, uh, as a major design aspect of the subdivision is obviously the drainage design. The commentary- Um, that's one hundred feet. Um, it certainly states that there should be no structures and should be left, um, you know, in its natural vegetation. Our commentary for that was that- Our commentary for that was that we thought. These will be green drainage areas. They will not, you know, obstruct, uh, visually to the subdivision or from Marshall Road. So I would really like to at least discuss that with the board, um, because if those need to be revised, obviously they're, they're kind of a major aspect of the project.
Okay. Uh, we can, we can do that. While we're on comments, though, we do have two comment sheets from town departments, one from our health officer indicating that, uh, no septic system. I'm assuming that means that there's no design submitted.
What is that?
Okay. Which is not unusual at this point in the process.
I don't know.
Right. Yes. And. But this must comply with Kingston's, uh, Kingston Town Ordinance Article one thousand, fire protection regulations. And I believe that there was some discussion on that with Mr. Falzone, something.
Yep, there's actually a couple of comments.
Going to do sprinklers instead of cisterns, I think.
Uh, there's actually a couple of comments that Joe like read into the record, that being one of them. He has spoken with the fire department and they would like sprinklers in lieu of a cistern.
Right. Um, this is, well, I can, I can.
Please.
I can do this now. Uh, this is an email. An email that came in today to the planning board. From Mr. Falzone, uh, saying we want. So that's the way we'll move forward.
With sir.
With sprinklers. Okay.
Yep.
And we've talked about that and we'll be doing the hearing for that, uh, probably the next time.
Yes, sir.
It is within the one hundred foot perimeter buffer and will need to be removed by March twenty twenty.
That's what he said is shown on the plan.
Okay. And that's on an abutting parcel.
It belongs to an abutting parcel, but it's on.
Okay. All right. So the, the.
Time. I believe Joe is contacting him, I believe.
He does now. It's been in twenty-eight, we'll talk about that.
He knows now.
All right. Uh, the third.
Planning board votes to allow them, understanding the entity that takes title to the easement, that there is no liability to the homeowners association. So if the Southeast Land Trust has declined, there are other options, of course. Yes, well, this, this plan specifically states on one of the pages that that, that open space will be owned by the homeowners association.
Ah, okay.
Which is one of the allowed.
Right.
Mechanisms within our innovative zoning ordinance.
Right. Okay. Uh, thank you, Joe. Okay. So, so that was his communication to us today. And, uh, I believe the board did get a copy of the hydrogeologic report. I think Ellen sent it out, uh, this afternoon. Just a quick question. The plan sets still include the design of the conventional subdivision?
Correct.
I'm, I'm assuming that we wouldn't want that at this point?
Well, we wouldn't record it, but.
Yeah.
It's, it's admitted to show their density.
Yeah.
Because they, they show the conventional, which our ordinance requires.
Yes.
And, and with that, they, they've shown a plan that comes up with thirteen, um, lots. And then they've also followed the density formula that's in our ordinance. And that actually comes up, I think, with a lot calculating the in excess of fourteen lots. So, because we also, we have a formula in our innovative zoning ordinance for coming up with density. So they've, they're, I think they're rightfully using the yield plan, which has less lots proposed as their base yield plan. But Dennis's comments indicate that the board needs to consider that there may be an issue with that conventional plan as well. So there are some things that we need to discuss.
Okay.
And that's. I go forward as presented, if they use the yield plan and the yield plan's invalid. So.
We probably need to decide that right away and if they produce another, either another yield plan or the other density calculation.
So I just, I went online while we were talking to determine if BAE Homes is a current corporation and it has been dissolved. According to the state of New Hampshire Secretary of State.
And.
Yes, it has. And the, the easement itself says BAE and it's, or it's assigns. And I have no idea how to determine whether they ever assigned it to anyone.
Was this subdivision completed prior to, I mean, yeah, was, was the Brookhaven subdivision completed prior to our town ordinances that required at the end of a cul-de-sac or somewhere on the property that there'd be access to the abutting properties?
I would have to say no. I would have to say they would never have done that if they didn't have to.
Correct. So.
But it does show on our tax maps.
Interesting.
Even though it does show on the subdivision plan.
Okay.
Which subdivision?
The original subdivision plan.
Oh, it does show on the subdivision plan, but it does not show on the tax map.
Does not show on the tax maps.
But it does show on the subdivision plan.
On the deed which we registered to the county.
Peter, if you can hold that until we get to public comment.
Okay.
What about the dissolving of the?
It's been dissolved before the Secretary of State, BAE Homes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. All right. So we've got a, we've got a few things we need to work on here.
Correct.
So.
It's possible that, you know, um, when a corporation's dissolved, its assets are liquidated in some way that, or somebody acquires them. And I guess you'd have to, to review the liquidation documents for BAE and see if they just.
That's why I recommended that they provide that information. So.
Yeah, somebody else should have to do that.
But you can just dissolve a corporation without, without any assets being left.
Right.
It could, but I mean, they, they can, they can provide that information.
Right. The applicant should be able to research that and provide that.
From my perspective, which is a little different than Dennis's, I'm, I rely on the subdivision plan that was developed and it shows that connection. And that was what was provided to us in the design review. And the discussion by the board at that time was that everybody was in favor of not doing a subdivision that connected to this, to the Brookhaven development. The legality easement, I, I don't, that would have to go to town council from my perspective. We have a subdivision plan that shows it and a tax map that doesn't. And, and a description of the, um, right of way as being something that was in the possession of a corporation that doesn't exist anymore. So there. If, if that is, um, if that's going to be the, a concern for the board, um, then I think we really should refer to town council in the interim between this meeting and next.
But the only reason that we have to have any concern about that is for the yield.
We're not talking about going to that plan. We're talking about how the derivation of the thirteen units discovered. And if that wasn't a valid entrance point, then you'd have to make a, a conventional plan that entered and exited off of the.
Off of Marshall Road.
Which would be extremely limiting. So, um, then, then we'd have to decide whether they wanted to use the alternate density.
Well, then we also have to just, we have to determine, we, we have within our rules an allowance for a formula for determining density.
Right.
And it, and it does.
Their innovative subdivision design.
So that really makes the Brookhaven plan a moot point if it already meets the other criteria.
Something for the board to interpret.
I'm, I'm a little confused that, that. Unless that easement was given. So just because the subdivision goes out of business or the developer goes out, the easement doesn't go away. It's on the plan. That easement's there. True or false? Or they wouldn't have built.
Two people.
But here. That actually stated the ownership of BAE. And then BAE went away. So it's, so there's a wrinkle to it.
But, but do we need that if it meets the other criteria?
If you can.
If that is what I'm trying to present, I applaud the four oldest residents.
All right. I'm, I'm trying not to mix public comment. Do the deeds to those properties contain description of a homeowners association?
No. I close the office. You guys do this? I didn't move, I didn't move home. I, I don't think mine has one. My deed.
That's what I was saying, that easement would, I would think would go to the homeowners.
Yeah, but just like on power and everything like that, all those in the sixties started with homeowners associated. Where if they don't have a meeting after X number of times and the documents aren't kept active, it's usually after twenty years, it just goes away.
Right. Okay. Would still exist. Yeah. I, I suppose it's a question of, of who's responsible for it, maybe. But, but it doesn't go away just because the, the entity goes away. Because it was part of the approved plan.
It was part of the approved plan.
Yeah. All right. So the question, though, going back to it, is how does it affect the yield plan for the lots? And are we, are we affected by that in this moving forward?
In this process.
So if they, if we have two formulas for the yield plan and they meet the other formula, do we really need to worry about this at all?
Let me read you the section in your.
If I may, Glenn, I was also questioned by our team as the discussion went on. The way we interpreted was you had to do. And a mathematical equation to come up with your density.
Why can I never find the ordinance quickly?
It's two oh four, I think. The innovative. I think it's two oh four.
That's helpful. Thank you. There it is. Building density. And subdivision regulations. Remaining land for roads and utilities. The remainder of this would be divided by eighty thousand square feet, parenthetically, three acres in the aquifer zone, which this is in, to determine the number of dwelling units. The allowed number. By the applicable law mentions restrictions and septic system citing requirements. The number of bedrooms per unit shall not exceed four bedrooms per unit. And that formula as, as, as applied to this.
There's a calculation?
Yeah, they do that very calculation.
Okay.
To come up with the Y. That must be.
Oh, density calc.
So it's showing a total lot area of fifty-four seven one acres. Wetland area of forty.
Six point three.
Six point three seven.
Correct.
Of subtracting that.
Yep.
Leaving forty-eight.
Point three.
Forty-three point five four after the utilities.
Well, right, but after what? It, it does a minus and it gives you a running.
Yep.
And then after roads and utilities, which is four point eight acres, it leaves you with forty-three point five four, divided by three acres, gives you fourteen and a half lots.
Correct. Mathematically.
So that's the mathematical. That's the mathematical one that they use and that gives them, but that. Conventional one at thirteen lots.
Because the regulation states no more than.
Well, it says, it says no more than what could be done in the conventional. And so that's, that's what you've used.
Right.
It's not greater than.
Right. But it does meet that.
That's consistent. That meets the ordinance, yes.
I would love to use the fourteen and a half.
So it comes back to the issue of whether or not the Brookhaven easement.
What's the issue with the easement? I, maybe I missed it when I was, you know.
If it doesn't exist.
How can the conventional development use it for what?
How can, how can the conventional layout use an easement that doesn't exist? Because the conventional, the way they determine they can get thirteen lots is by tying into the Brookhaven, using that easement. If that easement doesn't, this is Dennis's question. If the easement doesn't exist, if it went away, then how can it be used to depend? Then the conventional plan would have to be shown not using that access point at Brookhaven, but simply coming off of Marshall Road in some configuration with conventional lot sizing, which might not be able to, to happen with a, with a loop road.
I mean, I understand the legality here of its existence, but I've never known an easement to disappear like that for a road. I mean, there are ones from the sixteen hundreds that are still usable today, if you can find someone with the right documentation for it. They, they did not have homeowners associations. They, they did not have homeowners associations.
And it provi... And their conventional plan comes up with three, with thirteen lots. In our math... Is greater than that. So, from my perspective, they've covered both options, but...
I agree.
That's just my interpretation.
Presumably, since the easement, in this case, it is... Never intended to be used, except as a demonstration of density.
Correct.
The easement was probably required by this board, and...
In fact, it was.
And so, on the theory that a future development such as this would be able to connect through it, so, it's kind of, it's kind of tough for us to say that, given a theoretical calculation, that we wouldn't recognize that easement that we require.
It's not a contention on my memo, because Dennis's perspective is different, and it's...
I, I think that if, if a developer wanted to use that easement, it would be a real headache and a killer for them to try to...
Well, nobody wants...
Obviously, I don't think anybody ever intended that to be used, but the, the idea being that if they had planned to use a conventional development, then it would have been incumbent upon them to try to figure out how to get access to that easement, and, but that's not happening, so, I don't have a problem with using, using the calculation, because we required that, that easement to go.
I mean, it appears that the calculations work out to meet, to meet the ordinance.
Right.
Unless I'm missing something here.
Okay. So, I think, do we want to take Dennis's third comment and say that we're willing to waive that?
No.
Not waive it?
The existing right-of-way easement is an appropriate yield plan.
Right.
Yep.
Because you can't waive it, because it's...
I don't want to hear waiver language.
Yeah, we can't waive it, but it's, it's, we're not gonna, we're not gonna deal with it because nobody's trying to use it.
Done. I think we're all in agreement.
Does anyone on the board have a different viewpoint of that?
But thank you, Dennis, for doing that research and determining...
Yeah, well, I mean, I think that they can resolve that themselves.
Yes.
On the other...
All right. So, you don't think we need to vote on that, do you?
I don't.
Okay. All right. So, by discussion and consensus, the board is comfortable that the yield plan is derived in a way that meets the, the ordinance, both the spirit, the intent of it, and the, and the technical nature of it? Okay.
I, I do think that Glenn's comment about the, how you're gonna put driveways in where they've shown the, the four thousand foot area isn't completely covering the front of the lot, how are you gonna get a driveway across there? We just had the last meeting, we talked about not even, you know, scraping the edge of the, of the four...
I mean, the, the, the answer to that pragmatically is that a four... You could then put an entirely new system in that reserve area without using any of the land for the existing system, if that existing system were to fail. Now, usually, people replace in time. They use that same area that the other septic system was on, so there is available land there, but we, we require a four thousand square foot area, and that four thousand square foot area shouldn't be encumbered by something on the site that would render that not usable unless you did a septic system that allowed, like they do in parking lots, that allowed... I don't know how they can reconfigure the four K areas so that they change in, in, in shape and allow a driveway that doesn't approach on the twenty-foot side setback. I don't know how they want to deal with that, but from my perspective, it's something that they do have to deal with.
Yeah.
Which means they're... Phil was just pointing out the, the well radii, and it appears that the seventy-five foot for the state...
Yeah, they all comply.
They all comply.
The hundred foot...
The hundred foot does not.
Correct.
And so, there would need to be easement language?
Yeah.
Okay.
One inch.
And then, an additional two or three that went into the setback area of the open space, where no building's gonna take place, so...
The other one, is it Scott?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it was a, was a note on Dennis's comments, the, the issue of the stormwater treatment area within the foot...
Setback.
Obviously, you're gonna need some direction from the board as to whether or not the board feels that, that having detention basins within that two hundred foot setback meets, meets the, meets the ordinance or not, because, because it, it could mean some redesign for you, so...
Yes, correctly added.
So, on lot seven dash twelve, we have a structure or a detention basin that is located in an existing field area, so in regards to removing existing vegetation, it's really just low-lying grasses. In its place will be a stormwater detention area, which will be a very shallow hollow green area, very similar to what's there now. And then, on seven dash one, that is in the wooded area, that is roughly to be a hundred and fifty feet from the main road, and again, that will be a green grassed area, there's no obtrusive structures in these. So, our comment to the board is, you know, versus a conventional subdivision where you could put a building within thirty feet of the right-of-way, which will be a little unsightly, we still have our two hundred feet visual nice open area, however, we just have these grassed drainage treatment areas. Is that acceptable to the board?
And before the board discusses it, I just want to read the part of the ordinance that, that, that is kind of the crux of this, aside from the fact that there's that two hundred foot setback, and I'm reading out of dimensional and lot requirements on page two oh four dash two. It's C one C, and it's titled natural screening, and it says, "The natural vegetation within the existing," I'm sorry, "The natural vegetation within the external setback areas shall be left undisturbed, except for the purposes of providing access to public streets and ensuring proper site distances as determined by the Kingston Road Agent." So, it's, it's something the board is gonna have to come down on one way or the other. It is. Yeah, it's not something that you have the opportunity to waive, and if you felt that this doesn't meet the ordinance, it would then mean the applicant would have to do a redesign, or would have to seek perhaps a variance from CPA. I guess the, you know, I, I understand the, the argument here. I guess where, where I'm, where I get hung up is that it talks about that two hundred foot buffer, or two hundred foot setback being undisturbed. And it is being disturbed, granted, it's being put back in a, in a fashion that's probably very similar to what's there, but, but it is, it is disturbing it, so... Anyway, thoughts from the board?
I think the other issue with that is that, that, that basin that we're talking about that's in the wooded area is also within the well setback also. So, if detention basin stays there, the well has to move. If the detention basin moves, then the well doesn't have to move. So, it's not just the conflict of the setback issue, it's the conflict with the wells and the protective zone around the well. Okay? Just a little deceiving, because it doesn't show up on that plan with the, with the well there. It should be shown on that.
Scott, are you aware of what Dennis is talking about in that situation?
I couldn't actually hear him. The distance from the well to the, or the septic to the drainage area, to make sure it's thirty-five feet.
Making sure that it's two hundred foot setback.
Yep.
And the radius goes into the...
Yep. The radius is allowed in there, just not the well head.
Dennis, what were you saying?
No, I, I think a protective zone around the wells, the stormwater detention area shouldn't be within the protective zone around the well, because the detention area is what captures a lot of stormwater runoff, which has a lot of pollutants in it. So, I don't think it's prudent to have a stormwater detention area within a, within a, a well protective zone. What's the state recommend on that? Do we know? I, I've seen...
I don't.
I've seen multiple situations, they, these developments, where they do these retention ponds, and they're quite elaborate. They do different layers of soil, they put plants in them, they make them look great, and they're well within a hundred feet of these wells. And we're talking topsoil, and a well's two hundred and sixty feet deep. It's to keep everything from flushing into the wellens, that's what I've seen. I'm not an engineer. I, I would like to know what the state says about that, to get some more information on it. I can't reme, I can't imagine a topsoil retention area is gonna pollute a well, but I might be wrong. It's common practice in developments. They put them, put them in everywhere, and they're actually quite costly to build, incorrectly. They look good. I mean, they put vegetation in them, so...
I think if, if Dennis or the board would agree, between us, I think Dana, the actual professional in this, could actually address that, that comment rather than, than Beal's do it, the, the hydrogeologist who's sufficient in that data.
I think the zoning ordinance is clear that the area cannot be disturbed. Putting the retention bases in does disturb the area, and it does gonna, it is gonna bring it back to the same kind of natural field look that it has now, but I think our, our hands are tied, and that the ordinance does say can't be disturbed. I think that's something that needs to go to the zoning board of adjustment.
Or, or a redesign, I mean, following your argument, or a redesign, maybe that's another, that's another option, and I don't know how flexible that is.
Because I think the purpose of the ordinance is that it looks as though we're undisturbed. I know, we're looking for something undisturbed. It is disturbing it, but in the end, it's going to look exactly like it looks now.
Sort of.
Sort of.
Well, sort of. It won't look the same.
It, it won't look the same, and it, and it is still man-made.
Right.
And the, one of, one of the reasons that that requirement was put in the ordinance was because people were, at that time, thirty years ago, really freaked out at the idea of houses being closer together than they were comfortable with, a two-acre zoning. And the, the whole idea, because our two hundred foot setback is way larger than most perimeter setbacks. Our goal was so that people from the street wouldn't see that. They'd see no change, and they could be comforted by that fact, that all that was going on that was different to them was going on a long ways away. And that, that was, that's why that's, that section is so stringent.
But if they're gonna build a road, yeah, they're gonna need something to do with the water. They'll push it and do whatever.
We absolutely are saying that a road has to go in there, and there is always going to be drainage associated with the road. But that drainage associated with a road doesn't have to be in direct proximity to the road. That's, that's the whole concept of ditches, right? I mean...
Yeah, the water, the water...
You can channel water along a road. Roads definitely need to have drainage, but that drainage doesn't have to happen exactly where that road is. That much I understand about engineering. That's as far as I'll go. I leave the rest of it to Dennis.
I would agree with that. The only, the only, the problem we're facing, if you actually look at the contours, from Marshall Road, the site just goes up. So, unless we're gonna pump drainage water higher and get it away from the road...
I thought the hydrogeologic report indicated that the, that the lot would, that the lot sloped back toward the river.
To a point. The half that we're using, it goes up, and then you have the drainage way, and then it goes back down to the river. So, the development portion, you can see by the proposed grades, the road goes up, peaks, and then goes down. So, all the drainage is coming...
Right, 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 right.
Coming forward.
Other thoughts, I mean, Lynn's expressed herself, I, I tend to agree. I think that, that, you know, as restrictive as it is, it was, it was done restrictive for a reason, and granted, that was thirty-some odd years ago, and...
It was.
But, but it is what it is.
How does that play out against, I mean, the innovative zoning that this is applying towards? Do you feel that that's appropriate when we're changing from that two-acre threshold?
I guess I'm not following your question.
You mean the two hundred foot setback?
I'd say the two hundred foot setback for the detention basin, so it was further off the road, it was based when everybody would have two-acre lots, and...
Well, no, no, that's associated only with an innovative zoning ordinance...
I didn't hear that.
Where you're allowed the clustering of units.
Okay.
And that was a trade-off to get that closer density.
Thoughts from anyone else on that? Either in agreement or, or not? Because we, we need to give, we need to give the applicant a, a direction on this, so they know which, which way they're gonna go.
So, I would agree that it's, it's pretty clear.
It's pretty clear, it's either redesign or...
Yeah.
Wait, or, I mean, I...
I mean, whether, whether we agree with...
Your interpretation.
Whether we agree with that or not, it, it's pretty clear.
So, Steve, any thoughts?
I was noticing there's an area that could be...
Okay, Steve, I, you need to use the mic.
I was noticing that there's an area could be put behind on the map.
Well, and again, you know, if, if, if the board feels that, that, that the ordinance is, is restrictive in that way, then the applicant, that would be a choice they'd have to make, and, and perhaps consider a redesign, but, or seek a variance. Peter, were you gonna say something?
No, I was just saying that...
And use the mic, please.
Right. No, I was just saying that, that we could leave it to the applicant as to which avenue they want to pursue.
Oh, well, we're not, we can't tell them which avenue to pursue. The only thing we can tell them is whether or not...
No, I think, I think...
Our interpretation is of the ordinance.
Right, no, I definitely see that they need to, as Robin said, they need to pursue one of those two options. We don't really have an option to waiver.
So, are you, are you agreeing that the ordinance is clear?
Yes.
Okay. The other, Peter?
Yeah.
Okay. I agree. All right. And as, as do I. So... So, by, by headcount going around the board, the, the way the ordinance is written indicating no disturbance of that two hundred foot setback is, is our interpretation, and so you have a couple of choices at this point.
Yes, sir. Oh, I thank you for pulling the board, and we will, we will take another look at that.
Okay. The other, the other thing that I think we, we need to address is the, the, well, the possible third-party review, peer review of, of the hydrogeologic study. It's something that we, I don't think we've never done, we, we always do it because it's a critical piece to, to these projects. And it just so happens that the, the engineer, the hydrogeologist that the applicant used is the person that we would use for third-party review. But if we were to not do that review, just based on the fact that it's the person that we use, she was working for the applicant at the time, and so.
We do have alternatives that we.
We, we have others that we can use, and I, I, I would suggest that, that we would want to do that, but that's a decision of the board.
I, I hope that we have a review done by another independent hydrogeologist.
Won't that be part of whatever we do at the end?
I'm, I'm sorry. Say, say again, Lynn.
Is that something, I'm assuming that there'll be several things that we'll wanna have done after we hear public comment? Maybe they should all be done in one motion?
Sure, sure, we can hold that. Okay, those were kind of the things that were stuck in my mind as, as kind of urgent things that we needed to. Any, any other thoughts before I open it to the public? Alright, let's open it for public comment then. If, if you'd like to be recognized to make a comment or ask a question, please raise your hand, and then we can bring you up to the table. Sir. And once you, once you get yourself seated, that's a microphone in front of you.
Yeah, thank you.
And just ask you to state your name and address.
Mike Morris, ten Brookhaven Road, Kingston. As far as the, the external setback to the abutters, the hundred foot of undisturbed vegetation, are there, or is there experience with the board and the town in putting deed restrictions in to the prospective new lot owners that clearly tells them that that hundred foot buffer cannot be disturbed? There's no, there's no building, motorhome, RV, swing set, boat, car, or whatever that can go within that hundred foot area. So we don't have a problem down the road where someone buys that lot for lot seven, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, and those deeds aren't clearly spelled out, that nothing should go on within that hundred foot buffer where the vegetation can't be disturbed and that type of thing. So that's my, that's my concern, that the deed restrictions are clear and unambiguous as to that hundred foot buffer can't be disturbed to the new lot owners.
Right. I, I don't know how typical it is for, for deeds to incorporate items of zoning like, like, like this is, but I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's prevented necessarily or prohibited.
But zoning changes.
Well, yeah, it does.
And that makes it difficult to put in the deed.
So how does that, how does that prospective lot owner know that that hundred foot buffer that was put in as part of the approval process in an innovative zoning plan is something that just doesn't go away as soon as they sign their papers and they close? Because then what does that do to the abutters for the people that back up to seven, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven? Does it all just go away, that restriction? And now there's a, there's an RV and a swimming pool and a tool shed and everything else within that hundred foot, which was designed to protect the abutters from having to go through this in the first place?
Well, obviously, the, whatever ends up being the final approved plan would show all of those things. And some, somebody, somebody who's more of a real estate person than I am would have to sort of respond as to how a new owner might be aware of it via a plan, I don't know, Lynn.
It's absolutely by the plan.
The subdivision plan shows the building setback. And in this case, the building envelope is separate from that one hundred foot perimeter boundary. So there, and the building inspector permits any construction in town past a certain threshold. He, he, he did mention sheds, and I think some sheds don't require building permit approval in Kingston?
Small sheds don't.
So that, that could be an issue. But for anything that requires a building setback, the building inspector has this plan with the setbacks established at the time of approval, and they show being one hundred feet from the back boundary, or the side boundary if it's, if it's a side boundary.
But that's as it pertains to a building, when you talk about not disturbing the natural vegetation and screening that's there, if someone parks a camper, or a broken-down boat, or a portable sawmill, or whatever it is within that hundred foot area, haven't you disturbed that vegetation, which was part of the, 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 the process of approving the plan in the first place?
Well, the other, yes, you're right. The other, the other place where these restrictions can be called out would be in the homeowners, the documents for the homeowners association. Sometimes in a condo situation, there are condo docs, and all of that stuff gets spelled out. And in this case, there will be a homeowners association, and there will be documentation and paperwork for that.
Would that be something that the board reviews as part of the approval process?
We do.
What that documentation would.
The board reviews and we have, and we have council review it.
I mean, the reason of, of, for my concern is, in the swing set, you know, finding out today that it's gotta be out of there by March, it's not a problem. It's been there a long time, it hasn't moved since I put it where it is. But my house faces away from Brookhaven Road. I had a garage on the other end of the house that faced towards the woods, that had no driveway that went to it. My building plans say on the driveway, construction driveway only. So I know, because my road faces the development, and no one's gonna get more of a front row seat of what goes on in the next couple of years than I am, that road was gonna go right through. That Brookhaven Road was designed to keep going. Because my house faces that way, as I said, there's a garage that faces the woods, that had no driveway that went to it. So I'm, I'm right up against that back line, I'm thirty-something feet away from it. So that hundred foot buffer is important to me, to be able to maintain the peace and quiet and privacy that, that myself and my neighbors have now against this thirteen lot division that's going in there. So that's where it's, that's where it's coming from.
Right. So the other, the other, the other way that, that you or any other property owner, a budding property owner can have, can have a say in, in, if there's a violation.
Sure.
Obviously, you're gonna be watching things and, and other.
I'm not gonna have a choice.
Other folk, right, other folks will be watching, and, and, and it'll be in your best interest to, you know, if you see a violation occurring, the select board in this town is the, is the enforcing entity. And just a, a note to them or to the building inspector that, you know, there's some activity going on within a, within a buffer that isn't allowed, they will check it out, and, and if need be, they'll take enforcement action on it.
Yeah, I think it's just important to nip it in the bud, so that if you can include it in the homeowners' documents, so that the people, the new lot owners coming in are, are aware of it, it avoids a potential problem down the road for all of us.
I, I would add on to what Glenn said. If, if it was in the homeowners' association documents, that's probably gonna give you a lot more relief than the town can.
Sure.
Because they're gonna meet more often, they're gonna have their own rules and regulations, and if it's a good homeowners' association, they'll actually hold them to it.
Sure.
The town, you know, if a guy goes out there and clearcuts it in one day, not much we can do to.
No, it's, right, what's done is done, right.
The homeowners' association that is explaining this to people and explaining the rules of the association, they're gonna nip that in the bud a lot quicker than the town.
I thought there was something in the ordinance that referenced evaluating deed restrictions as part of setbacks in, in natural vegetation, I'd have to read it again, or maybe it was something else. But I thought there was something in there that referenced, which is why I brought it up, deed restrictions. But I'd have to, I'd have to take a look at it again.
Yeah, I, I mean, we talk about deeds both in the open sp- within the creation and maintenance of the open space and in the, with the homeowners occu- the homeowners association. So you, in either event, there are, there is discussion about deed language, but in neither case is it necessarily about the setback itself.
Okay.
It's about how to regulate the, the operation.
True, okay.
Going forward. But the homeowners' association documents, we always see and we always send to council.
Alright, and that would be the, the new homeowners' association, association that would take the open space that Southeast Land Trust didn't, didn't wanna pick up.
Exactly, they're gonna be responsible for that. So they're gonna, they're gonna have to be in existence, because that, that common open land for them is always gonna exist.
Okay.
Lynn?
I belong to a homeowner association, and someone did clearcut part of the land, who they shouldn't.
Yeah.
And they ended up, their insurance company ended up paying our homeowner of association seven thousand dollars for replanting.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I don't wanna have to get to that point with anybody, I just was hoping that people would be aware of it before they moved in, that it's not a parking lot back there, because it's, it's in my front yard.
Well, and again, if, if it's in the homeowners' association docs, it's, it's, it's gonna be more visible to a property owner than it would be, you know, because probably not all property owners are gonna be seeing the plan.
You'd hate to think that.
Right.
You'd hate to think anybody would buy a property and not have their plot planned, but.
But it happens.
Yeah, but it, but it happens, but not just for me, but for my neighbors and, and the other abutters from seven, seven to eleven that.
So I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna make sure that the applicant understands that, that there's some concern there in, in the creation of these documents. If, if language can be put in there, we'll, we'll check it when we, when we review the docs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dennis?
So along those lines, I just happened to notice, within the setback, that hundred foot setback behind Mike's house, they're proposing wells on lot eight and nine that are within that setback. So.
Right.
They're supposed to be natural screening, left undisturbed, those wells will have to be moved just so that the engineers can relocate those wells outside of that, because they shouldn't be.
The wells themselves are in the setback?
In the setback, the wells themselves are in the setback. So they really shouldn't be.
I, I see him making a note of that, so.
Yeah, so. I mean, I just happened to notice it, I just thought I'd bring it up now, so that.
Well, if they can correct it. Goes along with that.
Yeah.
Okay, other comment from the public? Peter?
Just a little, little clarif-
Okay, hang, hang on, hang on.
Little, little clarification here.
Sit down.
The meeting start, oh.
State your name, please, and your address.
Like they don't know who I am.
Hey.
I know, Ellen's there, Ellen's not here. Yeah, Peter Rodrick, Kingston resident.
Your dress?
Twelve Brookhaven Road.
Thank you.
The meeting was started, you were talking about the easements going across, it turns out it's my property. And then it switched over to the, let's call it the horseshoe situation. And the reason there's two is because there's two options. If there were five options, you'd see five of them there. Am I correct so far? I mean, let's assume there were five options.
Our, our ordinance requires two.
Okay, alright. The last half, I'm gonna call it, of the discussion seemed to be on the horseshoe. And the instructions we seem to give the developer concern the horseshoe. When we were at the last meeting, I left here thinking that the horseshoe was the one that the planning board seemed to be desirable of, okay? Am I still correct, because?
That's, that's what the straw poll actually said.
And that, and that's the proposal.
Okay, I understand that, but when we started, I, I thought we, I thought I heard them say, find out who owns the easement, and the, and the easement's been, been, you know, it's been, so the company's been dissolved, I mean, doesn't. So I got confused as to, as that back on the table now.
That was only for purposes of doing the calculation for density of lots.
Okay, alright, alright, alright. You can see where I got confused, because I thought, well, maybe you don't, but I thought when you started talking about the easement.
I can understand why you might be confused.
You knowing me how many years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Alright, I'll assume that the public has had their say, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Okay. Well, we've talked about a lot of stuff.
I think the board should not invoke jurisdiction.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that we're really ready for that.
A lot of rework.
Anybody disagree?
So I think. How long will it take the applicant to return with new plans?
Alright, so the, the question, the question from one of our board members is, sort of looking forward to a next meeting, when, when might you think you'd be ready for?
Good question. We did receive some, some substantial commentary we'd like to look at in, in addition to with the commentary from the seedlings meeting, we certainly have a little homework to do. We would like to take a, a few weeks to, to go over that. It sounds like we also need to prepare an additional application to hopefully run concurrently with this application. So a, a two to three weeks would be a good time for, for us to, to submit plans.
Okay.
If that's the case, it's really gonna be the December meeting.
Correct. Right, because, because what happens is that this, this meeting next month would be the third, third Tuesday. Third Tuesday in November, but submittal of new plans in advance of that.
Exactly.
Would be, you know, back.
Two weeks before that.
Two weeks before that. Given, given the task in front of you, I mean, maybe, maybe you could do it.
Actually, our second meeting in December is the tenth, it's the second Tuesday.
Right, we, we don't do the third, we do the second.
Yeah, so it's moving, which moves it up. So even though, that'll be tight.
Which, which means.
And now we're including the boundary line adjustment, right? The boundary line adjustment?
We, we, for the next meeting, we'd be noticing the boundary line adjustment as well.
So the meeting would be the tenth, and the plans would have to be in by November.
The last Monday in.
November.
November.
That's Thanksgiving.
Twenty twenty.
It's the twenty-seventh, the day before. Does the town offices will close the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth? We have to do the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, you're saying the Monday to expire.
We generally do it to the Monday when I'm there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
Which would be what date?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth of November.
I make a motion, we continue this hearing to December eleventh, with plans due into the planning board by, oh, December tenth, I'm sorry. With plans due to the planning board by Monday the twenty, noon on Monday the twenty-fifth, that we, we notice the boundary line adjustment.
Well.
Or we notice the boundary line adjustment in addition to this continuance, and that we send the hydro geological study out for peer review.
Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Did you hear the motion?
I did, okay. I have a question in regards to how the procedure works. I have not heard if you have found the application to be completed. Do you need to do that before?
We, we have, we, we, we have not.
Okay.
Therefore, the clock doesn't start yet. But the, we, we did a, we did a, it happened kind of quickly, but, and I could poll the board again, just to be sure. But it was the recommendation of our planner that it wasn't ready for invoking jurisdiction, but.
I think now that the yield plan issue, which was the main concern, sounds like has been resolved and/or accepted. My question is, what would hold up at least acceptance of the application so the client knows we are going forward?
There, there's still a number of things that have to be addressed with the new plan before invoking jurisdiction on it, Scott.
Okay.
But I think that you can go forward under the assumption that your density is what the town is comfortable with.
Yes, that's important, so.
Alright.
Yeah.
But the, the issues with the, with what's going on in the frontage there, in the front setback, I don't think there's any wiggle room on that, and that means that you're gonna have to determine how you're gonna address that.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, and, and between my list of comments and Dennis's list of comments, I don't think the board feels comfortable starting that sixty, sixty-five day clock.
Thank you.
Especially as if you decide to go to ZBDA, would need to find out from Ms. Leslie out here what the deadline is for making that application. So that would, we don't wanna, you know, that would stop this application process for until that was, uh.
Until that was approved, yeah.
We don't wanna use that sixty days of, while you're doing that.
Okay, so the, the, the motion before the board is to continue this hearing to December tenth, and to have any new plans into the board by no later than noon, November twenty-fifth. And it's also the understanding that at that time, we would be doing the, the hearing for the lot line adjustment as well. Further discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Okay, that carries unanimously, and we've finished that hearing. that hearing at eight fifty-five.
Thank you very much.
Any last questions from you before you...
No, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Oh, uh, right, uh, just, and I know some of the butters probably know this already, but, um, uh, this action of taking, uh, of, of continuing the hearing means that, that this is your notice for that. You won't receive another mailing. So this, well, unless you're in a butter for the lot line adjustment, then you'll get that. But, but for this hearing, this is your notice. Well, there's a meeting on December 10th. You just won't get the certified mail. Correct. Correct. Yeah, I think, yeah. Uh, Adam, we're going to, we're going to do a quick, uh, quick stretch break here for five minutes or so. Thank you. We did say we were going into reset. So then when she gets the blank space on the tape, she'll know.
She will understand.
Well, she won't un, well, she'll know why it happened.
He didn't let anyone know.
Oh, it's because she does that alone.
Rock in a hard place.
Hang, hang on, okay?
Okay.
Let me, let me just, let me just try to get this back into some, some kind of order so that...
Did you get the time noted on that last one?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
He wrote it as eight fifty-five.
We did do that. I just want to get this back. You learn that with these. It's like a magic threshold that those cross. All right, Adam, are we back on yet? Okay. All right, and we, unfortunately, we left the tape running, so Ellen's going to have quite a bit of dead air to, uh, to listen to before getting to the next, to the next thing. All right. So I'm, I'm going to introduce this hearing and then we'll, we'll turn the mic over to Mr. Pryor. So this is the, um, the last hearing on our, on our list. It is for Donald and Philip Pryor, 61 North Road, Tax Map R 32-9A. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the existing parcel into three separate lots. And if you recall at our last meeting last month, last hearing, um, Mr. Pryor was here, his engineer was not, and, uh, the board was wrestling with whether or not, because we had continued this numerous times and it wasn't making any progress and the board was debating about whether or not it should offer another continuance. Um, it did, uh, with the understanding that Mr. Pryor would then be, you know, trying to work with his engineer and get, get a plan so that we could move forward. Well, um, Mr. Pryor is going to give us an update now on, on where we are with that.
Virtually the same place. Uh, today, I tried to get ahold of Mr. Lavelle. I've talked to him at least twice a week for the past two or three weeks, mentioning items that are part of this planning board. I called him today. He was unavailable. He was on a project, so I left a message with his secretary to call me back, please. He did not return my call. I've been trying, you, you saw me leave every once in a while. I've been trying to call him at his cell phone, but it is unavailable. I'm between a rock and a hard place here. He was in place harder than that. Uh, I've got to do a lot more, I can see that. But I would like to request a continuance with the knowledge that I will be getting extremely involved in this project now. I pushed for the past couple of weeks to get plans in here to get done what needs to be done. I will push harder. But that would require a continuance and that is up to you.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
Did we receive, we did receive plans, yes?
We did.
No.
Oh. Oh, we did. He, he submitted a set of plans that had some minimal changes, from my perspective. I'm, I'm assuming the same with you. But they were different than the plans that were originally submitted.
And I know I was one of the ones against a continuance because we hadn't gotten any updated plans. I don't feel it's fair to the applicant if his retained professional is not giving him what he needs, but he did give us something new. Um, and with that, I would make a motion to grant a continuance to next week.
No.
All right, next meeting, sorry.
Well, okay. But before you go any further with the motion, um, is, is a, is the next month going to be enough time? Or, uh, would you want us to move it to the December 10th meeting? It would buy you about a month, uh, to get new plans and all the stuff into the board.
Could I? Pardon? If he goes to, if he goes to another engineer, that, he's not going to accept any of the other work. You'd have to start all over.
So it's all from scratch. Except for the wetlands.
I mean, if you, if you, if you think you can get some movement and, and get new plans and what you need to us by, with the, you know...
The 25th of, of November.
No, 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 for, no, if we, we do the November meeting.
The, uh, 4th of November.
Which is, which is like, three weeks?
Two, three weeks. Just a day short of three weeks. I mean, this is...
Go ahead.
Oh, hang on, Dennis?
So, so one of my comments was, instead of having two driveways, it's to have one, and that was one of my original comments. In, in talking to Rich St. Leo a week or so ago at, at the technical review meeting, we, we, or the inspectors meeting, he was telling me the same thing about the project. He would like to see one driveway. And so, you know, I think the, the project can be a lot better if there is one driveway and there's a significant amount of work that would need to be done as far as the location of the driveway and where it's shown and the grading and whatnot, which would make the driveway, instead of 10%, closer to the 5% that the fire department requires because the fire chief, uh, the interim fire chief was saying he wasn't happy with going down a 10% grade with a curve at the end without a guardrail in. So we're talking about the guardrail. And so I was looking at, from the point of view, was saying, okay, if there's one driveway, instead of two, coming down and making one crossing and then splitting into the three lots. So that's one of my comments, but I'm, just wanted to bring that up to the board so that that's a significant change to the layout and the design. So, uh, you have my comments and that's one of the comments. And, and I think that if you looked at that, that's something that could be done and could be done with that ti- timeframe, but, um...
The timeframe of November 4th or the timeframe of November 25th?
Because it's, it's Bill Gregzak who's the engineer who was working on this design and the grading for the driveways. So, um, it, it makes the, the, the length of the drive, the two driveways, if you're putting it into one, it's going to make it overall longer. But you're only going to have one crossing. You're not going to have two crossings. And so you're going to save money on the wetland crossing.
So you're going to have a shared driveway.
And I can talk to him about this.
Yeah, would that be in, in lot number two? Just take the driveway that's here now and branch it out left and right?
I'm going to show him what I drove through, uh...
That was something that we discussed on the non-sightwalk, sidewalk.
Well, and Dennis, just want to point out the whip issue there too as well.
I have that in my comments.
So there are two easements involved with that, then?
The easement crossing, yeah.
Yeah.
The easement's crossing, yeah. So it would be all the easements, but it would be one long driveway, one wetland crossing, not two wetland crossings.
Okay, I can catch that, catch up.
Put a new tape.
If Phil Gregzak has any questions, if Phil Gregzak has any questions, I can give me a call.
No, I'm not sure.
It's in my comments.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're back to the, back to the question of, if, if we do a continuance, to which meeting will we do it? And, uh, it would be nice to have at least some sense from you, Mr. Pryor, what, what, what you think is, is reasonable and what you think you can...
Well, based on this, November 4th, I do not feel is reasonable.
For, for the November meeting?
Yes.
But if we continue it to December 10th, it gives you over a full month.
That would, that would be more appropriate, I do believe.
Okay. All right, then I'd entertain a motion in that regard.
Can I, well, I, I will amend my motion.
The December meeting with all, the December meeting for the...
December 10th.
What, is that the plans?
December 10th.
Uh, December 10th is the meeting and November 25th is when all plans need to be prepared.
By noon on December, November 25th.
November or December?
The plans... By noon.
Okay. Now I remember because you started making the motion and I said, stop.
I'll second. Is there anything else after that?
All right, so a motion by Phil, second by Peter Coffin.
Yeah, I'm very welcome.
The motion is to continue this hearing to December 10th with new plans, uh, needing to be received in the planning board office no later than noon time on November 25th. Okay.
And I think your reliance on the telephone is probably, has to be superseded by showing up in person because, you know, you need to bring...
Okay, I, I need to call before the vote, Peter.
Oh, sorry.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed? Abstentions? That's unanimous. Okay, now if you want to just...
You know, I just was going to say that, that, that you probably ought to take a trip over there.
I, I've been between here and Hook City many times in the past month.
So, what happens to green...
Well, that's interesting.
Yes, yes, I, I do...
But before that...
She was here for this.
I know, I know.
I know.
Okay, Mr. Pryor, are you...
Well, thank you for your help. Could you some?
Yeah, okay. And it's, it's, we don't have a... It would, and they didn't withdraw it, so would we deny it without prejudice?
Well, that's certainly an option.
Or a request.
And they didn't request a continuance, and they...
They didn't move the compensation out of that move. It was a compensation.
Yeah, what she told me was that they were investigating their options, how they could, how they could accomplish what they want to accomplish.
I can only assume that... I didn't want to move forward with it, but...
I mean, they have John Ring, and he's a really accomplished engineer. He, he knows how to ask for continuance.
Yes.
So maybe they've even stopped talking with him.
I don't know.
We have no way to, we have no way to know that.
We do not know.
I, I think, in the interest of our very busy schedule, and it's only going to get tighter as we get going here, we can't just continue people indefinitely, especially with zero input from the applicant.
From the, you're right, they, they've provided no information.
And with a lack of plans and a lack of requests for continuance, I would make a motion that we deny without prejudice.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
All right, motion by Phil. Application without prejudice due to the discussion that we've, that we've had. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So that's unanimous. So if they shouldn't come back... Talk to you about your concern.
I, I understand that...
And you're speaking now as the ZB...
To get, apply, get it noticed, have the abutters noticed, and have a hearing in it. It's my understanding that the reason we're even doing that is so that the neighbors know what they're doing. But the law is clearly such that it doesn't matter. It's pretty much, we can put in an ADU now. It's, it's pretty, with the square footage and percentage and driveway and parking and all that good stuff. So at your last meeting, you voted on it, but you didn't vote to make it in effect immediately. When you accept a new ordinance, it goes into effect immediately, even though it still has to be ratified by the voters at the subsequent town meeting. Goes through the public hearing process, town meeting, and then it's official. But this one, you didn't do that, so we still have the whole ADUs from now until next March. And that doesn't make any sense at all. I don't know if you understand our frustration, because our hands are tied, there's nothing we can do to that, once Robert signs off on it. So why come to us?
I understand. Can, can you help?
Ken.
Thank you.
Zoning ordinance that takes effect, but isn't as much a more stringent ordinance as one that simply changes the process. It's a procedural change. So we, the, the board asked me to ask Peter Locklin, Locklin, how to deal with that.
Yeah.
In his response, you're going to love this, his response is, because it's a procedural amendment, both processes will happen between now and the March meeting date.
Oh, my God.
So the ZB, so I've got to say, if you, when you get an ADU application, the easiest way to do this is to do it with a joint meeting each time. Because otherwise, they're going to notice a ZBA hearing, and they're going to notice a planning board hearing. And there's, and, and Peter was clear. He, he said that because it's a procedural change, and it's an ordinance that establishes a new procedure, until the meeting in March, both processes have to be followed.
But normally, they wouldn't come before the planning board for an ADU.
Yeah.
Our change is that it becomes a conditional use permit.
But only on months...
Only for an external or detached...
Right. Right. So if it's...
Well, that one wouldn't have to be noticed, just the external would have to be noticed.
Just the external would be joint meetings.
All right, all right, so...
Because you don't see a...
Usually an internal.
Okay, okay, and those now, under the new ordinance, would...
Require the building inspector.
Just building inspector, sign off.
But your vote doesn't say that, and your minutes from the last meeting...
No, our... And we voted to move that forward to town meeting.
You did? Yes, you did, but I thought there was a clause in there that said ineffective, it doesn't, it still has to go through normal procedure until March.
Well, that's what Peter Coffin's...
That's, that's Peter...
Building units.
Where it goes, it changes the footprint.
It changes the building.
Changes the footprint.
External appearance or whatever.
External of the building, all right.
Correct.
If it doesn't change the appearance...
Did you go over this with, with the folks downstairs at all?
No, no, this is, this is the first meeting that I've been able to talk with the board about what Peter said, is tonight's meeting.
All right.
Which folks specifically?
Well, Tori, in, in particular, as does Susan, processed a lot of the applications.
Right.
Now, they have, I've talked with them on a few occasions, and I know we need to sit down and specify some more procedures for them, because they're both fairly new.
When I, when I come in on Thursday, I'm going to ask them to bring me down anytime they get an ADU application.
Okay.
All right, because that means it will never be longer than two days. If it comes in on a Tuesday, I'm there on Thursday. If it comes in on a Friday, I'm there on Monday.
Bad for residents that...
Yeah, so I will make sure that, that they understand that they should talk to me whenever they get an ADU application, so I can make the determination whether it has to be just through the building inspector, through you guys, or potentially a joint meeting.
Okay. Can I bring up one other zoning issue while I'm here and have your attention for a few minutes? It's not for a change, but I, I want you to be aware that we've had, we're just but a third variance extension request.
Oh, yeah.
We had one a few years ago, the variance had expired, we had the applicant go through the process, it was the one up in 125, called a Meeks Road and 125. But the, the application had expired, the variance had expired, the two-year limit, and they re-applied, and it was granted again. Then we had one last, a few weeks ago, that was on our previous agenda, where the applicant, the variance had not expired, it was for Bluestone Investments. And so they want an extension because they still hadn't all the permitting from the state. Everything else was set to go, that was the only piece. So we did vote to extend it because it hadn't expired. Well, today, another one came in for an expired variance for 19-page road for Mr. Khalil that bought the Crosby property.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
The corner of the road. And the variance, I believe, was for a three-family unit in that property. So I directed Tori to accept the application because the variance had expired. I don't know if we need a regulation on that, but I, to me, it's, it's, an, a variance that's in effect is one thing, one that's expired is totally different, and I, I made the decision to, just because it's expired, they're going to go through the process again.
I think, I think it has to.
Okay, but if it hasn't expired, and the board reviews it and still wants to let it continue for X amount of time, up to a year...
I don't think you have a choice once it's expired.
Well, maybe that's true. I mean, because it says in two years and you're done, but then...
But that's fine, but if it's...
That's, that's appropriate, but you're right in having them do the whole application when they're dealing with an expired variance that they want to be in effect again.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for the...
Well, thank you for joining us for the entire evening.
I think Phil just said, we have meeting left, so you can't leave yet.
Well, I'm not sharing the meeting.
Ah, I'll, I'll show you the minutes.
Good night, all, thanks very much.
Thanks, Ellie.
Good night, Ellie.
Invoice from Dennis.
When did, when did we really finish?
Hold on.
I put that we started him at 9:07, but we didn't...
Call it, call it 9:15.
9:17, I wrote down.
You wrote 9:17.
9:17, all right, 9:17. And that was for Mr. Pryor.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, invoice. Sign off on that. Question from Conservation Commission. Conservation easement, oh, gosh, this is from Evy Nathan to Ellen regarding Rowell Estates. Oh, and Ellen, looks like Ellen made a note here, see further explanation on next email attached. Oh, my goodness.
I haven't seen that. Do you want me to read over that while you do the next thing?
Yeah, that would be great, thank you.
I think that'd be great.
Thank you. All right. The next item in the packet is the bond, anybody who might be interested in looking at that. The next one is planning board budget transaction details, if anyone's interested in seeing that, it shows our expenditures to, to date, and where we are, where we are in relation to the budget. So it's here, if you care to see it. And...
Are we on track?
I'm sorry?
Are we on track?
Well, let's see. This is January 1 to October 1, and we are under, we're under-expended on every line. And the last item in the packet is a letter of notice from Department of Transportation talking about a meeting that's coming up this Thursday, and it's regarding the, it's a public informational meeting regarding the, the new design for the 125 improvements between the Plasto Line and Hunt Road. So this is, the meeting is here at Town Hall.
David?
Oh, it says Town Hall, and I saw another notice that said it was going to be at the library.
The library?
The library's the Russell Prescott Council meeting, and that's on the 28th, the Gassett period.
But, yes, the Gassett, but I, well, okay. At 7:00 PM, the doors will open at 6:30, it says.
What, what is that for?
This is the public informational meeting for the Route 125.
Oh, oh, so that is different than the Gassett.
It's not the Gassett, right, it's not Gassett, all right.
And if you would just put by where she wants to check for this, then I'll do this.
This one?
Yeah. The board doesn't have to deal with this.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
I believe we have some minutes, September 17 minutes to deal with. Anybody?
Just, I found just two things. Last paragraph of page three, my first name was misspelled.
Oh, no.
Is it misspelled Marilyn? Because that would mean I did the minutes.
And second to the last paragraph, third line from the bottom, there's a period after condo, which should not be there. There's a period in the middle of a sentence.
Condo dot association.
Okay, duly noted.
Although condo meaning, condos abbreviation.
Any other issues with those minutes? Would someone care to move them?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes as amended.
Motion.
Would I get to vote if I wasn't at the meeting?
Absolutely.
Yes, you do.
Did, did you read them?
If you read the minutes.
Okay, then you can vote.
I didn't pick up the misspelling.
That was part of our training that we had.
Yes, to approve the minutes as amended for September 17. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hopefully, there's no abstentions after what we just discussed. Okay, that's unanimous. All right, any other business to come before the board?
Yes, I promised that I would have the Shoreland Protection Ordinance comparison between the state and the town's ordinance tonight, and I have not finished it. So I will work on that on Thursday and send it out to everyone, so that we can still talk about it on November 5th.
Okay.
But I did promise that I'd have it tonight, and I don't have it, so I did, I wanted people to know that.
Okay, then you're alive.
That I, that, okay, we're not going to, that was, that was harsh.
Everybody knows it now.
But it seemed like I just confessed to that.
Now the, now the...
Pretty massive project.
It is.
So, so I will, I will get that on, on Thursday.
Thank you. Other business?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in...